I have to get the official time.
Please, guys.
You guys about ready? Is that good for you?
What's that?
You about ready? You good?
Yes, we're ready.
Are we ready?
We are ready. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, February 22, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Chairman Fox?
Here.
Jeff Newsom.
Joe Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy.
Sit. All right. Thank you very much. Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kalani, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Are there any changes? Seeing none. Approval of our meeting minutes from February 8, 2018.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes?
Looking good.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay motion carries. Next up is call to the public. Just want to explain that we do have two public hearings this evening, so if you are here and want to voice any comments in regards to the two individual items in 7A and 7B on the agenda, there'll be a time during those particular applications that you can do so. So if there's anybody that has anything they'd like to say that does not relate to item 7A or 7B, now is your time. All right. We'll close our call to the public, and we're now going to move to item 7A. Item 7A and 7B, I'll just explain the process once here tonight for a public hearing. What we're going to do in a moment is open the public hearing. We're going to turn the floor over to our planning director, Troy Langer. He's going to introduce the project. We're going to have the applicant come up table or stand, your choice, and add anything additional that you would like to say if there is anything. And then what we're going to do is ask the applicant to take their seat, and we'll ask anybody that wants to come forward. Come forward, give us your name, address, and the comments you'd like to make, and then we'll bring the applicant back after the public is done speaking, and we'll have a little roundtable conversation between the planner, the planning commission, and the applicant. So with that, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing at 7:03 for the applicant, Ryan McDonald, parcel ID number 4708-28-100-027. The applicant is requesting approval to establish a microbrewery in the existing space at the Heartland Town Center located at 1836 Old US 23. And for the record, all the public service or public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So now that we've opened it, first step is to turn it over to our planning director.
Thank you. Let me try to explain where this is located. This would be M-59 going east to west, and this is 23 here. The property is in the area highlighted right here. I'll zoom in on it. It's just south of 59 on Old 23. It's a shopping complex. There's several tenants in this building. They are proposing to occupy this northernmost tenant space here. It was the Kahuna Coffee that has left their tenant space. The applicant is requesting to renovate the inside of this tenant space to install a microbrewery in there. All work is going to occur within the tenant space. There's no exterior changes proposed on this. The only way a microbrewery or brewpub is permitted is by special use permit in the general commercial district. That's why he's requesting a special use permit to operate there. I did want to point out, I may have interchanged the words brewpub and microbrewery. I guess in my minds, those are interchangeable. That's technically not accurate. I believe I've attached in your packet the state liquor commission requirements for a brewpub. I don't believe those would be accurate. I sent out an email yesterday, and I've attached another document. Those are the requirements for a microbrewery, just so you have those. Not that that's material to our decision, but just so you know exactly what he has to do with the state beyond what happens here tonight. So I wanted to at least share that with you, and I'll be available for any questions or comments on this.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and introduce yourself and anything that you would like to add? Your choice.
As mentioned before, my name is Ryan McDonald. My family is here with me, my wife and my kids and my mom. We are, we lived in Heartland for close to 20 years. Just now outside of the area in Brighton, or still Heartland School District. We have a family business down the road in Highland that does, is a restaurant and bar, so we have 14 years' experience with that. 2,000 square foot, three-and-a-half barrel brewing system, five seven-barrel fermenters. We've done the investigation with the Livingston County Board of Health. We'll have an oven only for food. We will contract a kitchen outside to prep some of our food for us as well. We're very much into food as well. We don't want just to have beer. We can manufacture cider and wine, plan on having those along with, you know, soft beverages, but food is very important to us as well. It's about 55 to 60 seats-ish inside, and very casual, family-friendly. Just a good place hopefully to have our township and our neighbors and my neighbors get together and, you know, enjoy themselves. My family, I was telling John, our real estate agent, I grew up going to Highland Township Board like this with my dad, so that's what my family's here, so they get the experience too. But we're always very vested in our community. Grew up going to Milford High School in Highland and living here, kids in softball and school, and very active in our PTOs and PTAs, and look forward to having a nice professionally-run establishment, my wife and my family, and being able to give back to our community and having something in our, in our area that's, we can put our name to and be proud of. So, you know, I think the packet, if you've read through that, describes, and I feel like I'm trying, sorry.
That's okay.
I think it describes pretty well hours of operation. You know, we've gone through a lot of things. It's been a long process of four or five years trying to find the right place, and I think that it's finally coming together. And looking forward to any questions that we have. Have a professional brewer that's lined up. Can't think of much more other than, I guess maybe some of the comments that was asked of us as far as, again, nothing will change aesthetically to the building. Looking forward to working with Mike and, again, just being an attribute to our town community and bringing something hopefully that's needed and wanted. Forward to be a purpose.
All right.
That's about all.
Perfect.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Now, this is the part, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments in regards to this particular application, now is your time. Come on up, give us your name and anything that you would like to add.
Hi, my name is John Loeb. I'm with the Exclamation Board for Heartland Highland Road. The only thing I'd like to say is that I think that with Ryan's experience in the restaurant business, that this will be a business that will be run properly and will be run over a while. Versification in every community is important. We don't have a brewpub here in Heartland. In other communities, there's several, quite a few local businesses. And I agree that I think it would be very, that it's a local run, a little home, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Like to come forward, give us your name and anything you'd like to say?
Sure. My name's David Bittner. I'm Heartland Road. I've been here since 1971. I'm also here as a representative of the Heartland Business Association in support of this application. And we think this is a logical extension of the coffee shop, and this should be something that the county commission should approve and support.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? So what we're going to do is close the public hearing at 7:10. And now what we're going to do is ask the applicant if you'd like to come up to the table now. Just have a seat. We're going to take a look at the staff review letter that we have. I'm going to be starting. I don't know if you have a copy of that or not, or did you see the staff review letter?
I don't, I don't, I knew I read it, but I've got a copy with me.
Okay. Well, why don't you have a seat, and we'll, we'll be running through it real quickly here. I'm going to start on packet page number nine for the commission's benefit. The preceding pages are historical in nature. The information has been covered already. And as maybe Troy did mention, this is going to be a recommendation, by the way, one way or another, to the township board, who will have the final, final say. But I'm looking on packet page nine, about halfway down, special land use review. We have site plan review. There isn't a lot of site plan to do here, and Troy, do you want to explain why in this particular case we don't have a lot of site plan issues?
Yeah. So in this case, this is an existing shopping center. This shopping center went through site plan approval a number of years ago, and generally when one tenant leaves that and a new tenant goes in, that never comes in front of the planning commission. But because this particular use is only permitted by special use permit, the only way he can operate in this is to obtain a special use permit, and part of that, we look at site plan. And really, when, if they were proposing any changes to the exterior of the building, we would look at it. But the primary thing we're looking at here is, is there adequate parking to serve that proposed use in this existing facility? And of course, we've outlined that in the, in the staff report, but they're not proposing any changes to landscaping, they're not proposing any changes to lighting, the building materials are going to remain exactly how they are. So there's not a lot of site plan review to go through on this particular project.
All right. Thank you. So as Troy just mentioned there, so we have no impact assessment, because that would have been done for a GC for a, for a shopping center at the time it was built. Same with the traffic generation. Now moving over on to packet page 12, we're going to run into the parking, and this is where we get into calculations of different uses. So in this particular case, you're looking at the shopping center. You know how many parking places we have. They've taken a look at the uses that are in the shopping center. Different uses have different parking requirements. So through the calculations, they've determined that the total parking required is 107 spaces. The total parking available is 131, so it would comply with the parking requirements. Other requirements and of the zoning ordinance at this time, again, since we don't have to do a site plan review, because this facility already went through a site plan review, there are no other things to take a look at. So now we're just down to talking about other governmental agencies or things that they might have. There were a few notes there from the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority. I don't know, did you happen to see the?
I did. I think the exit.
Yep. The exit signs.
Yes, which actually we've, 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 we've made our entrance straight through, so it won't, it won't turn.
Yeah.
If you enter to the left right away, it's going to come straight in from the breezeway, I guess, entrance. So exit sign there, straight through. I don't think we'll have to be turning arrows and pointing in strange directions.
So you'll just need to comply with their requirements. They looked, one looked more like a question, the other was exit, health, safety, welfare type issues to deal with. Engineer didn't have much in the way of comments. DPW's review, didn't feel there was any additional need for any REUs. Are there any questions or comments? The applicant has answered the special use criteria, how it fits within the community, is it consistent with the area, all of those types of things. You'll see the documentation in there. And are there any questions for him?
Pretty thorough applicant. Lot of information for us.
Do you have anything to ask Mike?
There is an issue, and I couldn't hear if the applicant speaks, but you're planning on having food served there?
Correct. Yes.
Is there going to be cooking and?
There will be to an extent. The brewing system that we have is an open kettle system. It requires a hood. It's a type-two hood, which is a ventilation of steam and gas, not a fryer hood. So I talked to, I can't remember the gentleman.
Is Bob West?
Yes, I believe so. So I talked to him, I asked, you know, is it possible for us to have an oven, whether it be electric or gas, whatever I could have there, excuse me, to be able to bring food to temp? He said as long as there was no raw, raw proteins cooked up, that would be fine. So we've kind of come up with a, with a menu idea that, again, we'll contract a separate kitchen to prep food and then have onsite along with cold sandwiches, salads, those kind of things. So everything we'll do, pretzels, you know, those kind of things will be already prepared or won't be?
Like pre-made or whatever?
Yes. Won't be, won't be, you know, raw chicken, won't be, definitely no fryers. So that hood, it's within its capability of doing that job.
Yeah, and I think that was the fire inspector's comment in that memo. That's why you just need to comply with that. If, if it turns out that there is, you're going to have to comply with their requirements on ventilation. I see the other one here is possibly some sprinkler heads being moved, but that's something between you and them. You just have to agree to comply with what their requirement would be. So you said your other restaurant is in Highland?
It is.
Just a few miles down the road?
My, my family owns it. I manage and try and run that a little bit too, but 14 years.
Which one is it?
What's that? 59 West or Pinkwood Hall?
Oh, yeah.
Pinkwood Hall.
Oh, 59 West?
Yeah, so we've been there through good times and bad, which allows me to feel comfortable coming to you guys, and as I'm thankful to hear that it's a well-put-together plan, but, you know, we've seen, we've seen good ups and downs and learned how to be really efficient.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? If not, you'll see on packet page 10, down towards the bottom, a recommended motion. If you're so inclined, and if you are, this one is long, okay? Lots of reading.
Okay, I'll do it for you.
All right.
I'll try.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Usually Keith does this, so, all right. I move, or we move to recommend the township board approves special land use application 18-001 to permit a microbrewery to be located in the Heartland Town Center at 1836 Old US 23, based on the following findings. One, the planning commission has determined that the proposed special use of microbrewery meets the intent and purposes of the ordinance, as well as the specific special use standards outlined in section 6.6, as a microbrewery is permitted as a special land use in the GC, General Commercial Zoning District. Two, the planning commission has determined that the proposed use is compatible with the existing and future land uses in the area and adds variety to the business community. Three, the planning commission has determined that the proposed use is compatible with the Heartland Township Comprehensive Plan, which designates that this area as commercial and a microbrewery is permitted as a special land use in the commercial zoning districts. Four, the planning commission has determined that the proposed use is adequately served by essential facilities and public services as the site is located within the commercial core of the township. Five, the planning commission has determined that the proposed use is consistent with restaurant uses and will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future, future neighboring uses, persons, or the public welfare. Six, the planning commission has determined the proposed use will not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities as site is currently served by public utilities. Approval of the special land use permit is subject to the following condition. The applicant shall secure all applicable approvals and permits from state and county agencies. Two, all activities associated with a microbrewery shall wholly occur within, inside the building. I don't know if you have any other conditions other than meeting the fire.
Yeah. Comply with the other governmental.
Okay. So the third condition would be that you comply, like we discussed, with the fire department?
I'm just saying with all other governmental reviewing agencies.
With all other governmental agencies.
I support that.
All right. We have a motion to recommend approval of special use permit number 18001 from Commissioner Grissom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed nay motion carries. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Now Troy, how soon will they be up on the board's agenda, would you think?
I think I can get them on the, are you guys planning to cancel your next board meeting, so it's just the 22nd? It's either going to be March 8th or March 22nd. I don't know if the board is going.
I think they're, I don't think we're, I don't recall them. I know there was some discussion about that, but it'll be.
Two, couple of weeks.
It'll be in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. All right. Perfect. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Welcome to your time.
Yep. Thank you. Next up, we're going to move to items 7B. This is a special use permit number 18002 for Spicer Orchards Farm Market LLC. Again, we'll follow the same procedure, and we were going to turn the floor over to Troy once I open the planning, or the public hearing, then we'll ask the applicant to come up. We'll ask the public at that point. So we're going to open this public hearing, number 18002, at 7:21 for the applicant, Alan Spicer, parcel ID number 4708-04-300-003. The applicant is requesting approval of a special land use permit for a farm market with winery at Spicer's Farm Market located at 10411 Clyde Road. And for the record, all the public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So with that, turn it over to Troy.
Okay. Thank you. Spicer's Orchard Farm Market is located on Clyde Road. This is 23 going north and south, and the exit there is Clyde Road. I'll zoom in where the property is, just off Clyde, the intersection with Clyde Road, a little to the east is the, the farm market that's in question here. You can see from the aerial view of it, there are a couple of buildings associated with this property, and the activities occurring on there are occurring in some of the different buildings. For the most part, the, the, the building that we're concerned with, with the special use permit is this somewhat center building here. And I've kind of gone through in the staff report and outlined the history, somewhat of the history on that, at least from the township standpoint, and I believe the applicant has indicated they've been operating there since the, the late 60s. So this is a business that's been there for a long time. It's operated as an agricultural farm market. It's never gone through a process to get a formal approval. As you can see from the history, it's, there was previously a conditional use permit. Those conditional use permits no longer exist. There is no such creature, if I can call it that, anymore. They've had, ultimately in, in 2009, they were issued a liquor license as part of their winery for wine tasting, and then in 2013-ish, they were issued a land use permit for this building that you see right here. And that land use permit, when it was issued, was issued for a storage building associated with the agricultural winery that's on the property. And as it's come to pass, it turns out there's more than just storage going on, and the applicants have come in and said they need land use permit for, the building is now used, there's a wine tasting in there and almost a bar in there. And the township can't just simply issue, at least township staff can't just simply issue a land use permit, even though that might currently be occurring in there. We looked through the ordinance, spent quite a bit of time. The word winery is not listed anywhere in the ordinance. What we've done is, is determined that the closest is a farm market cider mill operation, which is only permitted by special use permit. There is a provision in the ordinance that says a use specifically not identified, the planning commission can determine as a special use permit that it's also permitted on the property. So what we've done is decided it would be best to bring this in front of the planning commission as a special use permit in order for them to continue to operate as they have been inside of that, inside of the building there. So what I've done is outlined the special use permit standards for you in the staff report, and given you some of the history of the permits that the township has issued. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have on this.
Okay. Thank you. Now, would you like to come up, introduce yourself and anything you would like to add?
Hi, I'm Shannon Rowe. I am the next generation at Spicer Orchards. I'm in a partnership with my parents, Alan and Wanda, and my brother Matthew. They have, we have, as a family, have operated in Heartland since 1967, originally in, down here, if you go down here, in this old, old 1860s barn is where my parents started off. They had a bakery and a cider press inside the silo there. And, you know, back in 1967, Clyde Road was a dirt road. And so it's, it's grown quite a bit over the years, as you can see, and had a family and, you know, now it's, we just had our 50-year anniversary of having a business in Heartland. So we think it's kind of exciting to have been part of this community for so long. We moved with my parents, I was two years old when they opened the market here in this building, is our current farm market. And that's been, in that building since 1980, and we had a bakery, and we moved the cider press and apple storage and a small retail space into the farm market, and it's been there my whole life. So the last time when Mr. Langer mentioned that we had a conditional use permit in 1991, I was 14 years old. And we've done a lot over the years as far as growing and becoming part of Michigan's heritage of having a pick-your-own and a cider mill, and, and we really think that that is something special that people in Heartland really enjoy having. It's a point of pride in the community, and I think that people move to this area because of that unique heritage that Heartland brings. So I agree with everything that Mr. Langer said as far as the permits. We kind of started out this journey because we wanted to put a fire suppression system in our bakery hoods, which is located in the farm market. And so we, there's documentation in your packet showing that the fire marshal has, you know, looked over the plans for the fire suppression hood, and that's what our original intention was to do. At that time, we went to, had to go to the county to get the permits for the fire suppression system. And the county said, we have no records and no documents of any building anywhere on that parcel. So at that time, they wanted us to update our permits and update our records so that it would be accurate and correct in the public documents. And so that brought us back to where we are today. So I hope you can take all of this under consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Now we'll move to the part of the meeting where the public has their opportunity. If there's anything that you would like to say, please feel free. Come for, give your name, address, who you're affiliated with, if you so choose, and we'll record those comments.
My name is Abby Upderson. I go to Heartland High School, and I've always remembered going to Spicer's Orchard as a kid, and I think that would be a great expansion for adults, to be able to go and do that. I just felt like they expanded so much, and they have something new activities and things that you can do there, and it's just a family tradition area that I think would be great to expand and add on to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Still got to ask your name again.
David Bitner. On Heartland Road, and I'm here also as a representative of the Heartland Business Association. I've known the Spicers for many years. We're not very far apart, maybe a mile apart. They're good neighbors. They're good long-term business. They're good stewards of the land. And they've turned this into a Heartland destination business that brings people here. And so they're good for our community, I think. And they're a good local employer for all of our youngsters. My son worked there in high school, and I know there's plenty of youngsters that work there. So they're a good, good example of our community here, and I hope you support them.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the call to the, or the public comics and the public comments, and actually the public hearing at 7:31. And would you like to come on back up, grab a seat? You probably have seen the staff's review letter also?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to begin on packet page number 30 for the planning commissioner's benefit. And we can see special land use review, general standards, the being harmonious, the compatibility, serviced by adequate facilities, the same type of things that we looked at in the previous application, we would look at here. Not create additional requirements at public cost, not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing. I believe that you've provided us a letter responding to all those in a favorable way. So then we would get to our special land use review, applicable site standards at the bottom of the page. And we probably need to talk about those a little bit. Because we don't have any site standards here because we currently don't have a site plan. We don't have a, it hasn't been through review. And Troy, I'm understanding that the building, the facility that they originally, that we're talking about, the winery, was originally proposed for storage. And so under the Right to Farm Act, of course, that is just approved administratively. And now its use has converted to something else. So what are our options and opportunities here?
I think in this case, there's a lot of options. This is a unique request. This isn't a typical request that you have come in front of, at least our office, on a regular basis. And there's a lot of history there, and you can see some of this has been approved in the past. And if the planning commission felt that a more formal site plan that included a review of, for example, parking and adequate lighting should be part of this request, certainly the staff can honor that and can do that, if that's something the planning commission desires. There is a parking lot. You can kind of see from the aerial. We've got a paved parking area here, and there's a grass overflow parking. It would be very difficult to probably calculate exactly how much parking is out in the grass, but...
And I think your picture is maybe a little out of date. That parking lot has been extended a number of years ago, and it goes beyond the winery now. So a little bit more pavement there, but then still going into the field.
Okay. So if that's something the planning commission would like to do, they are, as part of this particular request, there's really no exterior improvements that are part of this special use permit. This is for interior work that is, some of it has already occurred, and then some of it they want to do with their fire suppression hood and so forth. So I'll let the planning commission help guide the direction that would be best to move forward on this.
Any comments?
I do have one.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to say, Ms. Spicer, you'll always be Ms. Spicer to me. Sorry.
That's okay.
Two kids going through your class, you know. I think it's a, and my wife utilizes the market twice a year for sure, in the spring for the berries and the fall for the apples and the peaches. And then I use it as a babysitter for the grandkids. And then there's Santa Claus. I think it's a great facility. I really like the building. It's really pretty inside. I'm not, I just want to say upfront, I'm not against the idea of the winery. I really like. That's fine. It's a great place. It's a nice place to have one. However, I'm a little concerned about the use that it's changed from a warehouse, basically, to now it's, has occupancy. There is occupancy required, requirement from the fire department, which is totally different than a warehouse. So I'm a little uncomfortable because we, as a planning commission, needs to, need to protect health and welfare of the public that come visit your building. And without a site plan, and looking at some other things, including a fire inspection, I'm a little uncomfortable kind of moving forward with it personally. There are options you can, I think we can talk about some options you could do around this.
Any other comments?
I have similar. I mean, I, my kids have gone through Spicers as well for, they like to stand next to that big apple.
You get the annual picture of how tall they grew.
I think we've got about 100 pictures from the time they were little. I remember also when this, the liquor or the permit for the winery came in, and I, at that time, I understood it that it was going, it was in the farmer's market. And that's what I recall it being permitted, and that was discussed. I don't remember the new building until I started reading this information that suddenly now we have essentially, in a lot of ways, a restaurant. You've got a restaurant on your property that wasn't there before. So I'm struggling a little bit with that because there's a lot of business people in this community, not just, that have gone through that site plan process and to make sure that, you know, our role, our job is to make sure that, you know, property is properly developed in accordance with the zoning ordinance and, but most importantly, that it's done in a manner that protects the public health, safety, and welfare. This sort of came to us a little kind of backwards. Normally, people come in and say we're going to, we've now converted, we're going to take this building and convert it into a different use.
Sure. Let me give you a little bit of an explanation, and maybe that'll, that'll help you understand how this process happened. So when the building was first built, its intention was as a winery storage area for our grapes and our wine tanks and our fermenting areas and things like that. And that was its purpose when it was built. We did have the winery originally inside the farm market, and it used to be a section that was the craft store area. And we renovated that to the winery in 2008 after we had gotten the permission with the liquor license. Over the years, it kind of just grew and grew. It was a very popular addition to our business. We quickly outgrew the small bar area that was in the farm market. And then at that time, we were trying to do the best we could to make a good experience for our customers and try to handle the very large crowds that seemed to come on those busy fall weekends. So we had opened up just a temporary bar area at the end. It's just about maybe a third of the end of the building. So two-thirds of the building is still under wine storage and wine tanks. So it was opened up originally just as an overflow area, as an attempt to provide a better service to the community. There is no restaurant-type of, kitchen in there. We do have sandwiches, very similar to like the brewery that's going in. Most of it is made off-site. Anytime we have, you know, an event or something like that, a lot of times it's catered, usually from the French Laundry in Benton. And so there's, the kitchen area is more just of a prep area for getting the food ready to go out to the customer. So there's nothing really being cooked or anything like that there. Just mostly sandwiches, crackers, things like that. There's 16 seats there in the, inside the tasting room, so you can imagine it's quite small. So I don't think that there was ever an intention to purposely try to skirt the rules. I think that it was just an attempt to grow the business and the best that we could in our short season that we have. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to, you know, get these documents into the order that you would like us to do, not only for the township, but also for the county, so that we can move ahead with a positive and good, solid plan behind us.
Well, I too am a fan of Spicers.
Thank you.
And I support the winery and all of those. By the very description of what's going on there is what causes the red flag for me. We bring in all these people. We get these crowds. We get these people in this building. We've got parking lots. We have events, you know. I think there was a Uker tournament last weekend.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have 12 people attend.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. And we have wine tasting parties and those things. So I understand there are, the Right to Farm Act and the things that it allows you to do, but you can't get by all of the local ordinances through that. Certainly, the fact that the cider mill is there and the businesses that are involved, they're all revolve around it, and I don't think there's any disagreement with that. I think what's happened is, over the years, the success has been so great. It's just grown here, grown there, grown a little here, grown a little there, and all of a sudden we have this.
Yeah, we certainly have growing pains, that's for sure.
You do, which is fantastic. We love the great business, and I love it being an attraction. But we want to keep the public safety in mind.
Sure.
I would personally like to see a site plan review done and find out where we're good and maybe the things that maybe we aren't.
Sure. We currently have a site plan underway, as the county has asked for that, for the installation of the bakery hoods. So I have a new site plan drawn up for the farm market, and the, they're coming in this weekend to measure for the winery.
Okay, so we might be getting there. And I would suggest, if the commission is so inclined, that maybe you get together with Troy to discuss what that site plan review process would be. You know, it's going to involve the evaluation of the facility itself. Are there enough exits for people in there? I was there a fall and a half ago, and it was like standing room only. I mean, it was like herding cattle in there. So congratulations. At the time, I didn't even think about it, like, wow, I wonder how this all happened. But I do think we need to take a look at that. And, you know, you're open in the evening, you're open till 6 o'clock year-round, according to your website.
Yeah, we usually close, well, we're open year-round, but we're only open a few days on the weekend. And it's, we've been doing about $1,000 worth of business each weekend. And so we were going to open up March 1st this year for the first time early. Normally, we don't usually open the winery until the farm market opens in mid-June. So, but we were, we were encouraged by how well our weekends were doing. And so we were going to see how it went, if we were open seven days a week this early in the season.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
But there are times of the year when it's dark, when you close.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure there's lighting out there.
Sure.
We can't have patrons walking out into a dark parking lot. There are things, your driveway access for your parking. You know, the Livingston County Road Commission, forget the Right to Farm Act, Livingston County Road Commission has a say on those access points. You have overflow parking. I'm not sure whether that's right or wrong. So I really think that this is a great opportunity to put a benchmark there for yourself, for the township, as to what's really going on.
Sure.
And understand, it isn't to not have it go on, but I think we need to know what's going on.
Come on down. We're, hang out with me.
Well, there's a little more formal process.
I need an extra person to help me make donuts on the weekend. I'd love you to come, come see how it works.
As long as you're not counting the ones going in and how many are coming out. But, I mean, there's a process.
Sure.
It's really about the health, safety, and welfare. The site plan review includes things like architecture and all that. Those are easy things to look beyond here. I think the building is aesthetically pleasing. I think the site is wonderful. It's a great magnet for people. But there are things that you have to do when you own a business that you're welcoming the public in.
Sure. I do think that in 91, when we had our original, you know, conditional use permit, a lot of those things were addressed. And we do have lighting on the outside of all the barns. And the entryways and exits into the main parking lots were all, you know, at that time where they were supposed to be. And so I know that you want to make this as safe for the public as you can, but I would like to try to ease your mind that, you know, all of the things that we have done, we have tried to do to code, there's, you know, access ramps for handicap, there's handicap parking, there's handicap bathrooms, and we have tried to do that as best we could.
And we love that. That's exactly what that's part of the site plan process.
We need it, we need it on the paper.
Okay.
And the application submitted to the planning department to allow them to go through all that and make sure that it's good.
Okay.
All right, and we would ask that of any business in town.
Sure.
We won't be unreasonable, but there are some standards that we've got to make sure that we're complying with.
Sure.
My recommendation, because we approve a special use permit with a site plan, would be to ask you to ask us not to act on this this evening.
Okay.
So we can get the site plan process done and take care of this.
We could also table it.
We could.
We could table it, and then when the site plan comes in, remove it from the table and...
We can, we can do it that way, but only at your request.
At her, yeah, at your request.
I'd like to request that you table.
All right.
I'll move the table. Where's my number there?
18-002.
I can see it now. I'd like to table special use permit, application number 18-002.
You have a second on that?
I will second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. So what you want to do is, before you do much of anything else, I'd suggest you give Troy a call, or Martha, and set up a time to come on in.
Sure.
And they can explain to you what that process is and what some of the things you'll need. And then let's see how we can get that wrapped up for you.
Okay, that sounds good. Mr. Langer and I have become good friends in the last two weeks, so I'm happy to do that. He's a fun guy to work with.
All right, great.
He lives up in farm country, too.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, where's my agenda go? Okay, we have no additional business. Call to the public. Is there anybody that would like to come up, anything now? Something on the agenda or anything else? We'll close. Call to the public. Planner's report. Troy?
I do have a couple of things. I did have a, I want to make you guys aware that March 13th, we are going to do that joint meeting. If you recall, at the last planning commission meeting, I asked for some dates, and it looks like we are going to do that on March 13th. That should be a Tuesday. That's an off week. You'll probably be getting a formal email with respect to that. That's a joint meeting with the township board. We'll probably have it right over at the table over here. I believe we're going to have a guest speaker at that meeting. Mr. Gibbs is going to be there talking about retail trends and discussing what the trends are in the retail commercial sector. And probably have more information as we get closer to that date. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, if you recall at the last meeting, I think I indicated I was going to have a meeting with the Heartland Schools. I did have that meeting. They're very interested in upcoming development, primarily residential development. They try to do their forecasts for the future on school needs, and they rely heavily on residential development, and they want to know what type of development is coming in. They also like to hear about other developments. So that was a very good meeting. It was a chance for me to kind of spend some time with the schools and talking with them. I also wanted to let you know that Imagine Theater has been issued a land use permit from the township. We did that just today, and they will... And they will be probably starting in early April. I think they're looking at an April 2nd date for construction. They still have to go to the county for their permits there, but I did want to give you some update information there. Also, I am seeking, we are looking at March 8th as our next meeting. I know a couple of you have contacted me and said you are not able to attend that, so I just wanted confirmation on whether or not we've got enough for quorum. If you plan to be there, I'd like to know. If not, I'd like to know that as well, so.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Yeah?
I think so. I might be traveling, so I'll find out quickly.
Okay. I think Commissioner Murphy has indicated he will be there as well. So it sounds like we'll, we'll have enough for a quorum, so. That's it.
All right, thank you. Number, item 11, committee reports, anyone?
I have one.
Okay.
I had lunch with some local residents today and they brought up the issue that I've brought up before. Their question was, "When are we going to get streetlights along M-59?" This is more for Joe to take to the board, but...
I'll take it to the board.
Oh, yeah. They're, it's tough driving at night and especially with the rain, and that was the comment.
Which locations are they talking about? All the way down?
All the way down. And it's only going to go worse with more development, so. I mean, probably hit, probably hit the businesses that are there now and then plan for the future, maybe. You never make them all happy, right?
Put them on those ugly talls.
Power poles.
Power poles.
Yeah?
All right, anyone else? Need a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Mitchell, and second by Commissioner Voight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posnay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay.